All right, good morning. I've called to order the ready to schedule Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, 10/11/2016. Happy Birthday, Callie. And ask if everybody please join the Board as we honor America with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you again, and good morning. This is, first item is always, public comment number one. It's an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on today's agendas, or anybody wishing to do so. And seeing no one moving immediate microphone, we'll move on to consideration. Oh, we're gonna skip minutes, those will come next week, so we're to personnel actions as listed, Board.
Move approval last minute.
Second. Every motion in the second. Any notations? Clinton?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions pass. Consent agenda, please add road closure 1720 and utility permit 17029 and 17030.
Move through.
No changes?
No changes.
Motion and a second. Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes. Public hearing items, consideration of proposed plans, specifications, and form of contract for Hickory Grove Park Shower Building slash Storm Shelter, in consideration of setting a bid opening date for November 8, 2016. Mike Cock, Mike, how you doing today?
Good. Good morning, Ed.
Good morning.
Ed Dassler.
Well, this morning, asking for your consideration in going to bid for a project that we designed for replacing existing shower building in Hickory Grove Park with a shower building that doubles as a storm shelter. And so, this is not a new subject, anyone here, we've discussed it in the past, have it budgeted, and have discussed it for the last couple of years. However, just to show you some, show you some more information on it here. I know this is hard, this is, this is hard to see, but the circle diagram there on the left, kinda illustrates where that would sit at the Breezy Bay campground, the main campground at Hickory Grove. Let me zoom in on that a little bit. The rectangle right in the middle of that circle is the existing building.
When was that built, Mike?
1970.
Thank you.
The, uh, the kind of the diagonal hashed lines is the representation of the new building. So it won't sit, it sits a little, a little on angle there in that circle as opposed to the current one. And this is the floor plan of it. So the wings, if you will, at the top, on the right and left end at the top of that, those are the traditional restrooms. Those three stalls in the middle, those are showers, unisex showers. So we've got restrooms on both sides, showers in the middle. On the lower side, on both ends, those are unisex restrooms, combination showers, and those are designed for assessable specifications. And then in the middle is the mechanical room for the building. So it's a pretty simple design. I'll show you some pictures. We, this is a building that's over in Woodbury County, this is what we modeled our design after. It is the same building as what we are specifying through our design. We did that for a number of reasons. We toured this building, really liked it. It's a new construction, was built, I think, believe, two years ago, and really appreciated its design, its functionality, and are utilizing, I guess, the design savings, and cost savings, and not redesigning a new building for us, but taking the design that was done for this building and putting that in our park. So just some photos of the outside of it. Again, ours would expect to look just like this one. This is the inside. Now, as far as the storm shelter component of this, we, this is the main congregation area where the, that would hold most of the area, most of the people. The building is rated to serve as a storm shelter for 190 people. That is, that would serve, if the campground at Hickory Grove was full, our average number of, average number of occupants per campsite would fit in, in this building. Some more pictures, this is the inside of the restrooms. That's it. So, again, this is a replacement of the existing building with a new one that will serve as a storm shelter. In addition, Conservation Board has considered this and does recommend your approval. Just so you know, some of our dates moving forward, if you approve this today, we will release it for bids right away. Those bids will be opened by you on November 8th, and then on November 15th, we would schedule a consideration of bid award. The construction for this would happen right away. We would demo the old building and then get the foundation put in for this building, and contractor would tent it and work on it over the winter, and we will be open in a great time.
Mike, before we open the public hearing, you and I had a conversation about some potential areas that we could cut costs in this building. As I recall, we talked about going to the traditional gray, flat, pre-flap, prefab cement blocks. We talked about going to shingles on the roof instead of the metal roof, and we talked about instead of the full finish work that we were doing inside, so floor epoxy and things like that, just painted concrete. And I think in our conversation, and I don't want to misrepresent it, we came to the conclusion that that might save us a little money upfront, but in the long run, in terms of maintenance and wear and tear, we would have a lesser building. You want to address any of that, since we talked about?
That's absolutely correct. When I received the final cost opinion back from the engineers, I asked them for some cost-saving measures. They produced some of those and some of them that you mentioned. The one that they did produce that I did ask them to represent in bid is some sidewalk, i.e. some doing paved sidewalk and paved parking areas for the building. We'll handle that. So I asked them to take that out of the base bid and put it as an additive alternate in this bid. And so, if bids come in favorably, and we could afford that through the contract, then we would recommend award that way. Otherwise, then we would fund that or do that in-house.
Perfect.
Take it out of this bid. But that is the only, of the possible deducts, the only one that didn't, if you will, compromise the quality of the building or the maintenance aspect of the building. So we could spend money upfront or spend more money later, if you will, is a good analogy for the deducts, the only possible deducts that we identified.
Super. Board, questions for Mike before we open the public hearing?
Mike asked, he did a great, good job last night with the Board. I was in attendance, sharing this information, and there were considerable, a lot of questions, very similar to what you just raised, Supervisor Sanders, regarding the cost-saving measures that had been talked about, and I was extremely pleased with our level of discussion. And I guess I got a little bit of an education, because when I saw the building about 190 people, I'm thinking, well, residents nearby the core of Hickory Grove areas, if we did have a report of a major storm, depending upon when it happened and time of year, maybe they would be able to come in there, because we really don't have county facilities of this nature to prepare for that. And when we talk about, you know, our COOCOG and everything, that's what we're talking about, about preparing for, you know, that disaster that could happen at some point, you know, this just started to make a whole lot of sense. But Mike told me, as we looked at our figures, that it's not uncommon that, at a normal campsite, that this would accommodate, you know, all the folks that are basically there from all the different campsites that's available there in Hickory Grove. And so, it was an education for me, but I really felt that Board and Mike did just a terrific job in reviewing the proposal that is being brought before us, and now it's gonna be up to the Board to decide which direction we want to go. But I thought he did an excellent job last night.
CNN?
Build a lot of banks here in town, and I tell you what, it's nice to hear the fact that we look to see what we can do internally on a cost-based basis, and the fact that I have no love for a shingle roof, I think you guys are approaching it the right way, because it's not so much the cost of building, it's the cost of ownership. You will revisit that if you don't put a metal roof on that. And the fact that you might get yourself into a favorable bidding environment might allow you to do some things, you know, you might have some savings going forward that you might not anticipate or something.
One thing I should address, and the discussion about the roof, you don't think, well, can a tin or a shingle roof, it'll possibly be a storm shelter or tornado-proof? And so that the, let me back up just a little bit here. The, the, the storm envelope, if you will, is not count that roof. The storm envelope is at the top of the concrete that you see there, so that the roof, the inside roof is the storm shelter, is the structural roof for this. The top of that is not storm rated.
Right.
So the roof itself is not storm rated, the ceiling inside the building is storm rated.
And there was a good picture of that on the interior, where you could see the plank, the plank ceiling on the interior, right there, that's gonna serve this, that envelope they've got.
That's all concrete above that, those wood planks.
Good, good. Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody who would like to address this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, I'll turn to the Board for action.
I would move to consider the proposed plans and specifications for letting a contract for Hickory Grove Shower and Storm Shelter, and the considerations setting a bid opening date of November 8.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Accepting these is the plans and specifications that we're gonna send out for bid, with a bid opening to occur on November 8. Further discussion? Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It passes. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next item is discussion and consideration of the managed print solution and information leading to the choice of preferred vendor. It's got my name on it, I think the reason it has my name on it is, I pushed that we try to take a look at this thing from a, from a couple of different angles. I will say that I think we've done a great job now, looking at this from a couple of different angles. There's a couple of assumptions that we're making that everybody's gotta be clear on. I'm sure that there are those who would argue these assumptions, but these are the assumptions we're making. We're making the assumption that this is two high-quality companies that we're talking about, that both companies had the opportunity to take a look at what Story County does on a day-to-day, month-to-month basis in terms of our printing and copying needs, and were able to put together a proposal that they felt like would address that. If you accept those two assumptions, then we can truly get down to comparing the apples to apples of what is these, these proposed solutions going to cost Story County. We looked at that a multitude of ways, but finally, three different ways. We looked at it based on direct bid, just how that, how each of these two companies bid on the RFP that we put out. Then we looked at it trying to compare them to each other's bid. So if, so Infomax put together a bid that included some minimum number of copies. Marco did not put together a bid like that, because they're just gonna charge per copy as we go. So we tried to look at both of them, let's see. Infomax said that we were gonna utilize 75,000 black and white copies, 9,000 color copies, 1,000 color impressions on a monthly basis. So then we wanted to take Marco's bid and take a look at it, if in fact, that was the number we were gonna run, that was the second way we looked at it. And then we looked at it if we went over. So Infomax says, okay, here's what we're gonna charge you, up to this number of copies. If you go over, then we're gonna charge you X amount per copy, depending on whether it's color, black or white. Marco is charging us from the first copy on to do that. So then we looked at the over. We looked at it all three ways. It came back really, really clear that Marco is the least expensive in all three occasions, and it wasn't even necessarily close. And, and so, I lay that in front of the Board, that in my mind, if you accept the first two assumptions, and you accept that we did a good job looking at these things, trying to compare apples to apples, that to me, it becomes a pretty clear conversation. And I'll turn to the Board for that.
Let me, let me first put it again. I certainly enjoyed the opportunity to see both presentations, visited in the IT department, and then also in the assessors, and also recognized the outstanding service that the assessor's office had had from lead Infomax for a number of years, and was feeling very comfortable and good about the working relationship and the fact that they are an Iowa-based company and so forth. And my concern here would be, because the way that the assessor's office operates, different probably than some of our other departments, and if, if we decide to go with Marco from a county-wide perspective, all the others, we're not mandating that the assessor at the end of its lease or end of its agreement, I'm not sure if it's a lease agreement or whatever it is, would have to automatically just give up something that they're already doing. I guess I wanna make sure that we have some level of what are we, what are we expecting, especially from the assessor's office that already uses the other company?
Yeah. So the assessor doesn't work for us, right? The assessor works for the conference board. We're on the conference board, but we have one-third of the vote. The three votes are us, the mayors of Story County excluding Ames, and, and, yeah, I know you are, I'm doing this for everybody else, and the school boards. And that would be between our assessor and his conference board. You guys have been in enough of those, well, you've been in those as President School Board, you've been enough of those with me to know that I'm gonna look at bottom-line kind of stuff, and if our assessor decides he wants to go with something that is a more costly option, to me, he's just gonna have to make that case to his conference board. As far as the Board of Supervisors laying down a need and saying to the assessor, you've got to do exactly what we say, we don't have that kind of authority. Wayne has his own statutory authority. And so, we're just trying to make a decision that's best, that we feel is best for Story County. Assessor's gotta do the same thing for the assessor's office.
Great. Thank you for that explanation.
Absolutely. I need to, I need to say one more thing about what we looked at. So there were two different buyouts of buyout amounts. So we have current leases with, with some of our copiers in different places, and Infomax and Marco had two different buyout amounts that were calculated in what they put together. We just pulled all of those out. We had no interest in any of the buyout amounts. Again, we were trying to get to apples to apples, and, and for me personally, I believe it's Story County's responsibility to handle any kind of buyout that might come, and so I didn't want to see that as part of any of the bids, so we pulled those out as well.
Well, yeah, well, the only other thing is, based on the cost comparison and the three criteria that you laid out, it's, it's very clear to me that Marco offers the best upfront cost savings. And one of the things that I was particularly interested in is, I was reading some of the letters and was the way in which the auditor's office would be impacted if they had a situation during the election, that they would be able to have a much quicker machine.
Yeah, and Wayne, so I'm, I'm gonna-
Something important to me at that time.
Absolutely, but I'm not entirely sure that's accurate, so that was not one of our calculations. I think you've got two great companies here who would provide great service, and, and so we did not even go down the road and try and say, you know, one would have a machine here within hours and the other might-
That's good, that's good to know.
Yeah, absolutely. We just tried to get down to the, to the bottom-line kind of issue. I think that's our responsibility when we put out an RFP like this, and that's, that's where I feel like we got them.
Yeah.
Questions, Marty?
Well, I was surprised to hear that we're using seven vendors. I think that that, there, just from the jump, there's probably a party problem. I think that, you know, just in my use of the copy machine we use up here in the Board of Supervisors, believe to believe if that's the case throughout the county, we do have some pretty consistent problems, as it does die in us from time to time.
As I look at these, yeah, the numbers are pretty stark and straightforward. I guess I come, as Wayne spoke to here earlier, that the assessor's office is a kind of a standalone agency that has a machine-specific desire to be met. My question to the Marco folks, and I think it was answered previously, was the fact that is this machine available in your inventory to provide when their lease comes off, this machine? And I believe the answer was yes.
Yes.
So, I don't know, Wayne, if you have anything expressed, you know, with what you've heard up here today, in regards to how you would speak to your office's individual technology needs, or what you see on a going-forward basis? I would ask, you know, if you want to come up and, you know, flush this one out for me?
Morning. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. It's just on.
If the green light's on, it's on.
Green light's on, okay. I was involved in committee, where they did all the research, and I'm very grateful to be a partner, work with Story County and all the other departments. We've always tried to do that, and we try to do the best for our taxpayers. And some of the comments that Rick had said, our office is a little different, and it's run by a conference board, which has three different taxing entities. And over the last several years, we have, let me step back a little bit, we, our office provides a lot of era photography through our GIS department, and also, we have photographs of all of the different buildings. And we've learned over time, good quality really helps us on a lot of different situations with, in court cases that we're in, and also, the different agencies that we deal with, that this type of information is provided. And I know by taking, dealing with companies that where you're dealing just one office versus if you're dealing with a fleet, it's certainly gonna make a difference, just like how we deal in our office, the bigger you build the building, the cheaper it is per square foot, and the same thing ties indirectly into the companies. Our office certainly, you know, we're gonna look at, you know, down the road, we have 30-year or five-year lease, and we have the Canon copier, which we've been very happy with over the years on how we made our decisions. I came here 12 years ago, and after a couple of years, we looked at, we did have a Canon Camino, we decided to look at other ones, and it actually was with Infomax, we had sold the Canon Camino at that time, we're saying don't carry at this time. And we had copied, one time, we doubled, we had like a Recol, we had a Canon, we had Sharp. We had all three copiers sitting in our office at the same time, tied into the system, and we ran the exact data to see how it compares. And we had that approved for about a week, and we felt the vendors were, there were different vendors involved, and we were very fortunately allowed that, because that gave us more ample time to make a decision, what was a better fit for our office. And I guess at this time, you know, that, that was the direction we went. It was very close between Canon and another copier, which isn't any of the ones that are being offered now. But I guess I just want to make sure I have the opportunity that our office can address us down the road with our Board, and potentially, you know, you know, see what the rates are. But we, we feel that we have a lot of, we probably, we do a lot more color than other offices do. We probably do close to 4,000 copies a month, colored, which you have about 10,000 for the month in your bids, we have about 40% of that, and then we have between 78,000 black and white, between our printer and our copy machine. So I guess at this point, you know, I'm happy to see that you recognize that we do have a separate board, and I'm certainly gonna look at that, because cost is also a factor. And everything we do, we're gonna try to do the best product. Currently, we're very satisfied that the product and the service that we get on the copiers is certainly attributed to the efficiency and effectiveness of our office to deal with the taxpayers. So I guess at that point, that's all I have, unless you have, I mean, we're very satisfied with the product we have, and I know the numbers that you're looking at, I'm not totally sure for comparing apples to apples, but I know you've turned to all the numbers, and, you know, that's a decision that this Board has, and certainly can make, and that's your responsibility.
And Wayne, we have really appreciated the credible advocacy that you have given to a company that you're comfortable with, and a copier that you're comfortable with, and I think we really did take that into account. At the end of the day, though, it's our responsibility, just like it's your responsibility, to provide the best we can for the taxpayers of Story County, and that's why you tried to get to this apples-to-apples comparison. Now, as far as your office goes, I would hope that we'll continue to work together as we always have, which is, Story County, including you, in our operations wherever we can, wherever that's cost-effective, but understanding that you are your own entity, report to your own Board of taxing entities, and you gotta make the right decisions in consultation with that Board, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. This is not a public hearing item, but I'd love to hear from anybody who'd like to address this before the Board takes action.
Would you be appropriate if I?
Absolutely. You wouldn't be doing your job if you didn't.
Okay. Um, my name is Sarah Lambert, I'm Sales Manager at Infomax Office Systems, and we really appreciate the opportunity to serve Story County, and we've spent a year and hours on this project, and so we would just like to say thank you. Few clarifications. We, like Wayne said, have different models that we can choose from, and I know Marco has Canon as well, like we have Canon, and we have, there's different segments of machines in regards to quality and cost. We provided Canon because we felt that that was gonna be the best quality for the county. However, if we were looking strictly at cost, there's other machines that are still good machines, but don't provide the same quality like the machine does. And in regards to apples-to-apples, we're looking at the two different programs. If we were to, you know, refer to actually through the information that includes the no-minimums, then that would adjust the base payment. We have to take out the 75,000 included.
True.
And it would also adjust the cost per page as well. In the very beginning, when we started this in July 2015, we discussed three different programs that Infomax provides, and that includes the no-minimums. It includes a matrix program, which you paper as you go after you use it, and there's a tier, which, you know, the accessory is on. And then there's also one that's the shared volume. You know, my, my intense knowledge of the account, I'm very confident in what we provided. My concern would be, with the bid process, there wasn't specific machines that were asked with specific accessories like finishing capabilities, badge authentication, so that makes the bid process a little unique that was provided, and my concern is, it's not apples-to-apples when you have so many machines here and different here, how do you know what, how can you compare those apples-to-apples if they don't have the right finishing capabilities?
Well, sir, if I could inject just a little bit, it, we're kinda, when we submit bids, the bidding process is fair to everybody. And the way I look at it is, if companies have something unique, and some additional things that might make the difference, you know, they should bring that up during the course of that. In other words, sometimes they have to think outside the box based on what we, what they see right before us, because normally speaking, at the end of the day, what taxpayers look to us for is cost-effectively. that might make the difference, uh, you know, they should bring that up, uh, during the course of that. In other words, sometimes they have to think outside the box based on what we, what they see right before us. Because normally speaking, at the end of the day, what taxpayers look to us for is cost-effectiveness for the quality for the job that we're asked, uh, that we're seeking. And when we finally get down to, uh, comparing those kinds of things, uh, it's very difficult sometimes to see a wide differential and then recognize that we've got two quality companies, two quality products, and then go with a much higher one even though we've had one department or a particular group that have had some positive success from it. And so my, it's not meant to despair what was shared. I just think that sometimes that within the bidding process in itself, I've never seen a bidding process of any kind that covers each and everything, uh, in all of my years of service here. Uh, and I think it's, it's encompassing upon, uh, uh, maybe during the course of the discussion that maybe we didn't ask those questions upfront when you guys were here. Uh, or if we did, uh, uh, maybe the conversation didn't specify some of those things as much. So, I wasn't a part of the final negotiation part like, uh, Supervisor Sanders while I was working with the committee uh, and so forth from this standpoint. But I, I want to just basically say that to you, I, I have no problems whatsoever about the quality of your company or what you guys have done and the bid that you submitted. And I do think that this is not unusual, uh, after the process to see that had maybe we specified this or that, that we probably could have gotten some additional information. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, it happens all the time, anytime we have a bid. We're going to see it on November eighth when we open bids for the, uh, for the shower building that, that we had. You're going to have different companies who, we're going to give them all the same information to make a bid. They're going to make their bid based on what's out there. Somebody's going to come in with a lower bid, we're going to assess whether it's a quality bid or not. In this case, we believe both of them are quality bids. That is not to say that maybe you guys didn't bid machines that do more than we asked for or, or something like that. It's not, but at this point, we can't go, I don't think we can reasonably go back in and renegotiate what our bids were. You guys submitted your bid, they submitted theirs. And all, this entire process from that point on has been trying to get as close to apples-to-apples as we can. That's where I feel like we are. I really appreciate where, where you are in this and, you know, nobody is ever more expensive, right? They're always, if they're more expensive, it's because of quality or service or whatever. And that's, that's why you're good at your job. It's our job now to try to make a decision and that's where I think we are. So, thank you very much. Absolutely. Board, other thoughts?
Uh, I like the idea we're moving from seven to one. I think this will be a success the way we go. I'd have to say that, uh, yeah, it's hard to get this boiled down. I am mindful of Wayne's considerations in his office, but he has a two-year lease remaining and we will revisit on that later. I guess the dollars are the big driver here. I did reach out to, uh, one person in his organization in regards to what they had to say about Infomax. It was glowing and they are well thought of. But I set up here and these are now my dollars, I'm spending, these are the public's and I think I have a responsibility for them.
Good. Yeah, and the only thing I'd say, grow, really growing things about Infomax, but then talking to several of the large entities that use Marco, really growing things about Marco too. Again, two.
Right, there's two, yeah.
So, we're to the point to make a decision. Anybody willing to make a motion?
I would, uh, move that we accept a little bit, uh, uh, that was presented to us here from Marco, uh, with the, uh, monthly breakdown cost as, uh, laid out in the proposal. I don't know if I need to really, uh, mention what each of those are.
You just need to move, if you just move to Marco, just move to Marco. Yep.
I would say the county's done its diligence, this is a year in the making. We've looked at it pretty hard just in the short time that I've been here. And I'd like to thank that, uh, going forward, that the county's well served on behalf of the public. A second motion.
All right, we got a motion, a second further discussion. Clinton?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Uh, Marco is who we're going with and thank you to everybody. Uh, no agency reports today, departmental reports, animal control, and Sue, again, did not bring any show and tell items.
One of these days, one of these days. What does everybody?
Hi there.
Well, we'll start out, my, my little agenda that I hand out is a little different than probably you get from most people. But I like to keep everybody guessing until I get there. The first one would be what's going on with our numbers. So, our calls for assistance have been very high. We have got a lot of, um, animals that are coming in that we're finding out that we are also being able to help a lot of people keep their animals by things that we can help them with. You know, there's still, uh, an unemployment issue and there's other things going on and, and people who are bonded with their animals don't want to get rid of them. And so, we're trying to, to help that. But our calls for assistance were three thousand eight hundred and one, um, announced for the last three months. Our volunteer hours, they're usually much more, but in the summertime when we lose our students, which makes up a big percentage of our volunteers because there is a club over there, Schra, that's students helping rescue animals, which is devoted to coming over to the shelter. Um, we had two hundred and ninety-seven hours, but that amount will increase now. Excuse me, we're seeing a lot more students coming in. Our adoption rate on all animals, everything that comes in the shelter, the good, the bad, and the ugly, is ninety-nine point four percent. By agency standards across the United States, we are considered a no-kill shelter. And we're very proud of that. We work with the animals very hard to get them adopted, which in turn has helped us with, um, with being able to, which I will expound on later, being able to continue on with our program. Um, currently in the shelter, number two, how full are we now? Well, we have thirteen dogs, a hundred and forty-one cats. Two rabbits, four guinea pigs, two tanks of bitch, a cockatiel. So, and, uh, we would, we would have more, but we don't have the, the ends full right now. We could take a few more dogs, but we are, we are really full. That being said, uh, our adoptions are now, we always kind of go through a slump. There's about three times of the year when people are getting ready to send kids back to school. You know, there's a lot going on, people are heading out for vacations and the holiday time. But the rest of the time, our adoptions are pretty steady. Um, so we are, we're typically full this time of year. Uh, we will continue to see letters of kittens until early December. And then during the winter, when our numbers back off, then we are able to get all these animals adopted and be ready to start again in the spring. It's ours now, congrats to the county. Um, well, congratulations, Story County. Um, in August, the county board supervisors moved forward with the purchase of the property at nine seven five West Lincoln Way, which had been rented by the county previously for seven years. The owner did decide to retire and we were given the opportunity to buy the building. We are proud that half of the money used to buy the shelter came out of our donation account. And it was helpful not only for the taxpayers in the county, but it also showed that donating the shelter does bring good things. So, we are very anxiously, and I'll be the first one to say, I just can't hardly wait, um, for everything at the shelter to get done so that we can operate and show off our new building. We're hoping when the remodeling's done, um, that we would be able to have an open house when that's finished and invite everybody in to see how it's changed.
And take a cat or two home with you.
And take a cat or two home with you, you know? Um, and I, I really want to thank our. Yeah, it does, yeah. Um, I really want to thank our friends of the animals, people who have donated into this account and believe in what we do. I want to thank the board supervisors for, um, you know, standing behind us and feeling that this is a good move for the county. And I want to thank the other people now that have been brought into our world to work with, Cal Pearson and John Eifold. Um, you know, we're, we're going to all do this together and I think when we're done, we're going to have a really nice quality proj, project that people can come in and really be proud of. With ISU back in session, which brings us to number four. Students are back, which for us brings many good things. Previously mentioned volunteers. But the ISU, that's what school does, many, many services for our shelter. And this year, they started a new program. Um, there is, when I first started, there were like five shelters involved in this program. And now there's twenty-three. So, we don't get to take as many animals as we used to. The pro, the, um, program that they're doing this year provides much more service to the animals we do take. They used to spay and neuter, now they're doing the shots and the heartwork tests and everything as part of this project. So, that's really nice and it's an incentive for adopters because they're providing the rabies shot and the heartwork test, you know, that normally right after the adoption, they would want to go out and take care of. So, it's a good program. Um, we are, we get our share of animals in there, plus we are their first standby. When, when they need animals and we're always graciously hurrying over in the truck to get them there because especially with cats, we have so many. So, this really cuts our costs down. Um, number five, just another reason to spay and neuter. I've got some statistics I thought everybody might, might be interested, I sure do. People don't sometimes realize the, the factor of pet overpopulation. You hear about it on TV, you may not think it happens in Iowa, but more aptly happens in larger cities. Um, and this is just an example. If you start with two unneutered cats, one male and one female, and the cats are left to breed, in the first year, you'll end up with twelve cats, okay? Not a lot. The second year, sixty-seven. The numbers go on. By the seventh year, with these two cats and their offspring not being spayed or neutered, you have the potential to reach three hundred and seventy thousand cats in a seven-year period, starting with two unspeared neutered ones. So, now you think about all the unspeared neutered cats running around, um, in Story County or everywhere else and you see how, why these numbers are so high. And you know, some are lost to disease, some are lost to predators, uh, you know, whatever does happen. But even imagining that it was a hundred thousand after seven years, that's a huge population. So, that's why we are definitely on the spay and neuter bandwagon. And as we go out, we talk about it, uh, we do things we're having, well, I can talk about that later, but we want to make sure that the animals in Story County don't get out of hand. We've helped with a lot of the trailer courts getting that under control. We have helped farmers who have large populations and we want to keep that number so that we don't have an epidemic, uh, that the other places in Iowa are seeing. We have many other counties call us and say, how are you handling this? And, and you know, I know there's other counties that are, feel like, we are very fortunate that Story County has been proactive to have an animal control program. Um, other counties wish they did, you know? And so, uh, it's a very good thing that the spay and neuter thing is getting out there. We've been able to convince people who thought they never wanted to spay and neuter to do it and we're going to continue on with our message. There just aren't enough homes for them, so that's what it boils down to. Um, number six is giving us a moment. It's the KHOI radio, which is eighty-nine point one. Uh, they contacted about, contacted us with info about our animals. They wanted some PSAs and they just wanted to kind of chat online for a while. Uh, the first one aired last Friday, the next one will be in about two weeks and the last one will be right before Halloween. And they're just more public service announcements on, especially this time of year. Uh, we do not adopt black animals out of the shelter. We do not adopt black cats out as much as we'd like to. We don't adopt black dogs because there are groups out there who, um, look to, to get their hands on those animals for things during Halloween. And so, the month of October is, is off limits. It's, this all started several years ago and it's become quite common in shelters now to do this. But I don't know, it's been, it's been twenty-eight years or maybe longer than that. I got a call in the old building from a lady down in Des Moines. And this is, of course, before we had hallwaying and all this stuff. So, there was no way, it was just a phone call. And she said, you know, "You called from Des Moines, how many black cats do you have?" "Well, okay, is this a survey or..." you know? So, I said, "Well, I think it's time we had like five or six." And she says, "Okay, what time do you close? I'll be up to get all of them." Very suspicious, it was two days before Halloween. Uh, "Well, we, why would you need five or six black cats?" "Well, I just need them, I'll be up, I'll pay the adoption fee." And of course, that put the radar right up. I told her, just out of my mouth at the time, I said, "Well, I'm sorry, we, we don't adopt black cats until after Halloween." And we hadn't even been doing anything about it, it was just a gut instinct I had. And I said, "So, you're welcome to come in after Halloween, you know, we have a couple more days, you can adopt one." And she goes, "Why, we'll be interested in them." So, I got online, I did some research, I, I went to the library, I looked up a lot of stuff. There were shelters in the bigger communities that had started to do this and so we're following suit. It's kind of nice when all the shelters can do things kind of equally. Um, and so we feel this is just, this is just a safe thing because unfortunately, a lot of times, we're the ones that see the bad side of what happens. And so, we're trying to just protect.
So, now Sue, timing in this case was a factor. What if that person would have, uh, used my message? You know, I always say, "Black is beautiful." And if they would have just said, you know, "I want this cat because they're black and they're beautiful", you know, would it have made a difference?
Well, now, I, you know what I've been saying? I agree with you. Black is beautiful, but come in two days. Get a doctor, yeah.
Great response, great response.
Um, number, so the K, so the KHOI radio segment, they're going to periodically contact us. You know, this has been a terrible year for all different kinds of pests. If you have pets, you know, the fleas and the ticks and everything else that's been out and about has been a problem. And so, we're just going to have an online or an on-air discussion about this periodically. And it's just kind of to throw out there what's happening at the shelter and the kind of things we're dealing with and any recommendations we might have. So, it's a very nice opportunity for us. Um, number seven is who let the dogs out? Story County Animal Control, High Cap Alpha. We had a fundraiser there on Iowa State Campus last Wednesday, October fifth. It was right next to the Camp Eliot, it was a beautiful day. Uh, this is the second time that we've done this with them. They informed me that we will be their shelter to, uh, that they will have this event with every year. It was a great day. Lots of kids came, they spent, they paid five dollars and they get to come into this pen where we have the animals, small, large, happy, old. And they come in and they can sit or walk animals or sit with the animals. We can sell all of our animals off, um, for a rabies shot and make sure we were covered in all those areas. And then we have a liability form that we've had and we had everybody sign that. And so, it was a very nice day. We don't know how much money yet they raised. They also sold T-shirts, which this is one of them, and it just has pikes, puppies on the back. And so, it was a very nice day and they're very, they're a very nice group of young men. And we enjoyed working with them, they were a lot of fun and they were very, very, very good to us. Um, the county, Story County Animal Shelter has been thinking about, in the future, um, finding a way to, and, and this is at the very beginning stage, but we just talked about this yesterday out there, that we would like to make some sort of a video or a presentation online that would include the Schra students, um, maybe, you know, choose this fraternity, another sorority, maybe choose people from the dorm, um, school kids, kind of get a group going where we would make something, put something out there about the importance of animal ownership and taking care of them and, and why it's important to spay and neuter. Like I said, we're just at the beginning phases of that. So, but we think that would be fun and nice to have out there for people. It would be on our, our website and, um, you know, we might even see if we could get it on these TVs, so. So, anyway, um, so it was a very fun day with, with the High Cops, they're awesome, awesome guys. Back to the future, so there's many things coming up. We're having a neuter plan in November. Uh, it will be a neuter plan, only reason being is spay takes so much longer than a neuter. A veterinarian can probably do three neuters in the time she does one spay. So, we are looking to, um, have our vet, or just one of our vets, another vet that we know, or we're going to try to ask a bunch of veterinarians, we've already got the okay from two, to come in on a day that selects, that works for everybody. And we will rate, uh, neuter a cat, a male cat, and then we'll give her a rabies shot. And it'll cost twenty dollars, which is a steal. And once again, you know, this is our way of trying to keep that population down. And we will offer it to everybody in Story County. They'll be able to come, we will get reservations from people ahead of time so that we know how many are coming and how many to plan for. And, um, you know, we, we're going to have these periodically. So, it's a good thing. We're having a small garage sale at the shelter, October twenty-first, from eleven to three. And we're going to be selling all kinds of fun things. Um, so, if you have time, stop out, it'll, it will be, well, of course, there'll be some, um, animal things, dog vets and whatnot, but there'll be, and animal supplies, but there'll also be like furniture that poor people have donated. And like I said, we just have these huge garage sales. And it's so hard to have them anymore because of locations to find, to be sure that we have them inside in case of weather. So, we decided we're going to do maybe two small ones a year, one in the spring, one in the late fall, so. Anyway, that'll be coming up and we're excited for that. And then I have to bring this up again, speaking of remodeling, there's so much to do and look forward to. I don't think you guys realize the extent of how I lay awake at night and think about things. about things. Right now, Cal Pearson is working on some safety things that need to be accomplished, fence across, because we do have a pond out there, our lighting for the exit signs for fire, our outside lighting, and Cal and I are working on this. He's very confident, I feel, you know, we now have a good relationship, we're going to get this done, and it's going to be in the best interest of everybody in the county. We, I know some things are going to have to wait until next year. That's hard, I'll, I'll wait. There's just a lot of little things and projects, but hopefully, you know, by this time next summer, maybe we can be having a grand opening, and I guess I should say fall, and we'll be able to invite everybody out and, you know, let them walk through what we've created and what we've created for the animals and for the people of the county. And I'm just very grateful again to you guys for backing us, seeing the same vision we had in wanting to improve the lives of the stray animals in the county, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah, so, I mean, clearly, Story County made a decision many years ago of, of the role we were going to have with stray and neglected animals, and identified somebody with great passion and vision for what it could be, Sue, and you look at how far it's come under your leadership, it's phenomenal. And Sue and I talk in my office occasionally, and, and I have to chuckle when you say, "We may not realize how much you let wait." We realize how much you let wait, absolutely. And, and I, the message I keep having with Sue is, you've got to have a little patience. We're going to get there, it's just not going to happen overnight, and we're going to do what we have to do in a, in a methodical, thorough way, and it's a beautiful facility that we have for the people and the animals of Story County, and you take a look at all our facilities, this one's going to fit right in and be a great thing for everybody. So, thank you very much, we're lucky to have you. Absolutely. No other reports, public forum number two, opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on today's agenda. Of course, no action because we can't do the premise openly means law, and County Attorney Jessica Reynolds would get mad at us, but if there's anybody who'd like to address us about anything, now's the opportunity. Seeing no one moving the microphone, liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, Wayne?
No liaison, but I will report very quickly on the committee. Last night, I attended the Conservation Board, and the meeting and so forth, again, outstanding board meeting. We covered just some key things. We've already talked about one, dealing with Hickory Grove Shower Building, that's going to be coming back to us here next month for the opening of the bids. We also had a recommendation to approve the C2C plan. That's going to come to us, a recommendation from Conservation Board, I believe November 8th, I think it's on the agenda. Leanne was there, she did an excellent job again, talking about the implementation matrix and where we were. We had Nancy France called in, and just a tremendously engaged Conservation Board, and I'm really pleased with that. We also talked about our capital improvement plan and approved that for FY '18. Mike did an excellent job of laying out some of the long-term and short-term goals and things that is part of our vision, recognizing that they are an integral part of the countywide CIP plan, and how working together is going to be the benefit of everybody, and I, I just, I'm just so impressed with the level of cooperation that we have from Conservation with all of our other departments in our CIP plan as well. And then we also talked about an approval agreement with TerraCon on wetland mitigation, and we had a report on the strategic plan that the county conservation program is doing, and of course, as always, Jerry Keyes gave his environmental report, and we were pleased to have a discussion about something that was ongoing, and we'll be talking about a little bit later about US Corps of Engineering and transfer of federal lands. So, I, all in all, it was just an outstanding board meeting, and, you know, it seemed like I learned something each and every time that I'm there.
Well, thank you so much for representing us on that board. Marty, anything?
Liaison assignment tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock here in Nevada, they will be, the engineering firm will be announcing the choices that were made by just over 1,000 people in regards to the site planning for the Story County RIT facility. Look forward to seeing whether three, which one was selected, and we have a board health meeting this afternoon, which is never boring, and if anybody's got a little free time in the day, that-
Yeah, we need to get those back to being boring. Will you do something?
I'll be, I will do my part this afternoon.
Outstanding. Nothing for me announcements, Wayne. Marty, you guys got any forums this week, or are they taking it easy on you?
No, this week, no, it's a week away.
Okay, it's a week, oh, that's 20, okay.
Yeah.
It's next Sunday.
So, no forums this week for the county?
Not this Sunday, it's the following Sunday.
Well, I don't know, you guys taking a vacation or something? All right, if we've got nothing else, I take a motion to adjourn. So, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.